Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, May 20th, 2019, to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment this evening? Public comment? Okay, we will move on to First Selectman's Report. And I'll provide one for the minutes. Great. So I want to thank the Darien Historical Society for recognizing First Responders' Day on Saturday at their historic home on Old Kings Highway North. There was even a 1916 ambulance that was used in the Great War parked on the front lawn. It was extraordinary. Honorees included Chief Ray Osborne, Joe Warren, Bob Montlick, Dick Koch, and Chick Scribner. Collectively, these extraordinary first responders have given over 250 years of service to the town of Darien, and for that, we extend our sincere gratitude. Monuments and ceremonies will kick off our Memorial Day weekend with their Veterans Honorary Memorial Street Sign Program on Sunday, May 26th, at 12 o'clock sharp by placing the first sign in honor of World War II veteran Chick Scribner at the corner of Fairfield Avenue and Chestnut Street. So if you happen to be in the neighborhood at noon, stop by. It should be a wonderful, wonderful event, and it's the first of a number of street sign namings that will happen honoring Darien veterans. The Memorial Day celebration will continue with our annual Memorial Day Parade, which steps off from Goodwives Shopping Center at 10:00 a.m. on Monday. Immediately following the parade, there will be a ceremony honoring Darien veterans at Spring Grove Cemetery, as there always is. And following the parade, Post 53 will be holding their annual food fair at Tilly Pond Park. Please bring your family and friends to the parade and all the activities that follow. And it's wonderful, the Grand Marshal of the parade this year is Pat Parlette. And if you don't know Pat, she's probably one of the most extraordinarily positive people you'll ever meet in your life, so it's going to be wonderful. I understand she was the first female drum major for the Darien High School marching band, so bringing her back in the capacity as Grand Marshal will be fantastic. Today, I had the honor of attending a celebration in recognition of National EMS Week at the State Capitol. One of today's honorees was Dr. Dorothy Turnbull, who received the Dr. A.E. Herzler-Knox Award, which is given in recognition of an individual whose work has made an extraordinarily significant and lasting impact on the EMS system in Connecticut. Dr. Turnbull has 43 years of practicing internal medicine, and she specializes in emergency medicine at the Stanford Hospital. Dr. Turnbull is a resident of Darien and is very special to us because she's been a member of the Board of Directors for Post 53 for over 30 years, so it was terrific to celebrate her today in Hartford. And on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, we want to congratulate Lieutenant Jeremiah Maron for being promoted to the rank of Captain effective June 2nd, 2019. The office of Captain was vacated with the recent retirement of Captain John Lawler. Interviews for promotions to Lieutenant and Sergeant continue, as well as the selection of our new chief sometime this summer. Kate's not here, so we will move on to an update on the Diller Property Track Project, and we have some guests here this evening, representatives from the Parks and Rec Commission, the Parks and Rec Committee of the RTM, and Jen Montanaro from the Darien Athletic Foundation. So Lori, would you like to kick it off, and then Jen can come forward and speak as well?
Good evening. Lorene Bora, Chair of the Parks and Rec Recreation Commission, 38 Near Water Lane. The Darien Athletic Foundation approached the Parks and Recreation Commission in the fall of 2018 regarding its proposal to fund the construction of a cross-country running path consisting of two connected loops on the Darien High School property and the Diller property, which is a Darien park under the control of the Parks and Recreation Commission. The DAF hired Tai and Bond to prepare the necessary due diligence and design of the 6,070-foot combined running paths. This path will support training activities of the Darien High School cross-country team and allow the team to host meets. The proposed running path on the Diller property will be 1,440 feet, which is approximately a quarter of a mile. 1,020 feet of that will be crushed stone, and the remaining 420 feet will be a wooden plank boardwalk. The Parks and Recreation Commission supports the proposed running path and recommends that this gift be accepted by the town. First of all, the project is completely consistent with the findings and conclusions of the 2018 Master Parks Plan. One of the high priority items identified during the planning process was to expand walking paths and trail connectivity by exploring options to construct accessible multi-use trails in select parks. Specifically, this was, Diller was identified as one of the areas for a running path, and so this is completely, the proposed project is completely consistent with the plan specific to Diller. However, that was rated a moderate priority, but that more had to do with the ranking of the different things that the Commission felt needed to be addressed, and frankly, where we thought the most likelihood for funding would be. If you've been there, you know that the Diller property has had no maintenance to date. It's basically unused and unusable. The town has owned it for over 30 years, or basically a generation. It was purchased by the town for half a million dollars, and we really, really effectively done nothing with it. This proposed project provides us the opportunity for all townspeople to have access to this town-owned property, and fundamentally, when you think about it, it should be made accessible to the public in some way, shape, or form. The plan calls for mediating invasive species, for cleaning up the parcel. There's a lot of brush, old Christmas trees, all of that, wetlands remediation, et cetera. So it will really take something that's become quite a bit of a mess and really improve it in terms of removal of the invasive species and planting of native plants, which will improve the health of the property. The paths, as I mentioned, will be crushed stone, so there'll be use of natural materials, which will preserve the very natural feel. And then the boardwalks will go over some of the more watercourses and wet areas. So the Parks and Recreation Commission really feels this will enhance our town park inventory, and I think will address the, really what I would consider the one real parcel in town that is just not usable in any way, shape, or form, which is really fantastic for us. As we progress along, there are a lot of different approvals and meetings that we've all been attending to get this taken care of. The Board of Ed is working on a parallel path with the Parks and Recreation Commission. They have not finally approved it, but they expect to take it up in the next few meetings and subject to their final approval and any limitations they might establish. It's expected that the extended public access of the entire loop would be available to all townspeople at non-school hours, which would include summer school. But they may impose some restrictions, but the concept, subject to approval, would be that in non-school hours, the community could use the entire, the entire path, which is about one and a quarter, 1.3 miles, which would be fantastic. And that really supports the health and well-being of the community at large, in addition to supporting the cross-country team, which they train on the streets right now. Per the very detailed plans that were developed by the engineering firm, no trees will be removed from the Diller property, and they do not anticipate doing any surface regrading. Once the track is complete, the Parks and Recreation Department will be responsible for the maintenance of the crushed stone and will be expected to have scheduled checks of the park to maintain it. Pam expects that the annual cost would be a few thousand dollars a year, so not considerable at all. To date, we've received approval from the Darien Parking Authority to add six spaces along Nutmeg Lane, one of which is, will be handicap restricted, restricted spot. Both the EPC and the Planning and Zoning Commission hearings have taken place, and the hearings are closed. They both are under or have completed their deliberations. We were notified a few days ago that the P&amp;Z staff has been instructed to draft a resolution to approve the proposal at its next meeting, which is May 28th, and we are hoping for action from the EPC in early June. So to conclude, the Parks and Recreation Commission supports the proposed project and requests that the acceptance of the gift be referred to the RTM Rules Committee for assignment to the appropriate subcommittees with the goal of moving forward for approval by the RTM. We hope that this can be accomplished in a timely manner, which could allow for completion of the track in time for the fall cross-country season. Any questions?
Terrific. I'll open it up to my board for questions. Mark?
So the wetlands are handled with the boardwalk?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Excellent.
This really should improve the property. I mean, when you read the plan that was made by the Engineering, it's very detailed. There's a lot of technical terminology in it, but even the planning during the construction process, they talk about different techniques they'll use to make sure that there's no extra runoff or whatever during the construction, while, you know, dirt may have to be moved or whatever temporarily. So it appears to be very thoughtfully considered to really have no impact on the neighbors in terms of changing the water, water flows, et cetera.
What's the timeframe you're hoping to start the construction if it goes through the RTM positively?
You may, Jennifer may be able to answer that.
Do you want to come up, Jennifer? You guys can tag team on the questions.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Montanaro with the Darien Athletic Foundation. Our timeframe is if we can start following the June 10th RTM vote, it still needs to go back to, hopefully, June 11th, to the Board of Education if all goes well, and then we'd start planning right after that, so in hopes of being done for the fall, fall season.
Great.
I think it's great. Thank you very much, both of you. Along the way, I guess also, basically, Parks and Rec, were there any points that were made that, for any reason, for it not to go forward? From your perspective, I mean, you guys voted to support it, but in your discussion, were there any red flags that came up that you guys worked through to then make sure that you were all on board with the whole thing?
As far as the Parks and Recreation Commission, and our focus, of course, is the Diller parcel. The loops actually, the Diller will be actually a closed loop. It'll be constructed in a way that either the high school loop, if approved and built, can connect to it, but separately, there'll be a complete loop that people can complete just on Diller. So based on that, we focused on that piece, and there really weren't, because it was so consistent with the plan. There was really nothing different. As I recall, the only thing in the master plan that isn't in this was, you know, the idea that maybe there would be a playground there someday, but that wasn't brought up as part of this. But other than that, it's basically what we envisioned, so there really were not any hesitations. The initial discussions of the Commission were around how we might be able to provide parking, so that was an issue that we needed to make sure was addressed if there was going to be public access. But as mentioned, the Parking Authority, which is the Police Commission, did approve the parking. It'll be parallel along Nutmeg Lane.
And is there anything that Public Works needs to do in regards to that parking to develop that, or is it just lines that are?
Well, the sidewalk now is more straight, and it'll be cut in and then back out, and then the parking spaces will be in the cut-in so that we're not creating parking in the street. It'll scooch it in, so.
And Lori, obviously, the work will be done around the path, so the property itself does have a lot of trees down or whatever. We're not, we won't be dealing with all of the property.
No.
Yeah, that's way too much.
No, we won't. That would be too much. But it'll clear off, and there may be some tree trimming. They said, for instance, if, you know, a tree that they work around has some lower branches that could obstruct the runners when they're training, but the intent is not to remove trees and then otherwise leave the site in a fairly natural state.
Also, not that I would want to see a lot of signs in there, but how do we, as the town, protect ourselves if someone goes off the path and gets injured? I mean, basically, we're saying you should stay on the path. That's what we're providing. So how do we make sure that if someone wanders off and, let's say, they trip on a tree or whatever, that they don't then come back to the town?
We didn't consider that specifically, Susan, but I wouldn't think it would be any different than Stony Brook or Selis Woods, which is all paths. I was at the event there on Sunday, and, you know, there's various signage about staying on the path.
We did address the signage, that there would be ample signage, in addition to when there's a cross-country meet that is actually utilizing the Diller property, that there would be race volunteers, and the Board of Education will work with staff to make sure that they understand that the boardwalk in that area isn't part of the racetrack. So there'll be proper signage. We talked about that.
But also notifying the public that they cannot continue onto the high school property during the appropriate hours. So there will be some signage for that.
Great. Any other questions?
I want to acknowledge the Darien Athletic Foundation for yet another generous gift to the town of Darien, especially to the town and the Parks and Rec Commission, for the proposal to activate, as Lori appropriately described, an otherwise unusable piece of publicly owned land. So I think it's fantastic. I'm assuming since we have a handicap parking space, which we have to provide, that the crushed stone path will meet at least some form of ADA compliance. Would that be correct?
We did ask the engineer about that, which came up at the P&amp;Z meeting, and his response was that the standards in a public setting like this and like a natural park are not as stringent as what you would find, for instance, in this building or whatever. The path will be level, for the most part, and wide, but it will be crushed stone, so.
Could it be traversed by a wheelchair? Do we believe that might be true?
You wanted to push a wheelchair over crushed stone?
Yeah, it might be a little more challenging to push a wheelchair.
Okay. I just, a general comment that I think that we should encourage public spaces to be as ADA compliant as they can be so that everybody can enjoy it, can be an inclusive space.
Yes, and we agree with that. In this case, we're balancing the inclusiveness with a project that has been identified to support the cross-country team and general runners' needs, where this is considered to be the most appropriate service, and also in this parcel, because it's very wet in terms of not putting blacktop, which would be the most ideal surface, to make it the most accessible. So it is a balance, absolutely.
So I'll speak for myself and let my board members speak for themselves. I look at our concurrence with this project to be generally supportive of the idea that we'll now have an appropriate facility for our cross-country team to hold a meet. But really, our focus for the town is that we will have this parcel of land that, even without the cross-country team's involvement, we will have the ability to utilize this parcel of land, independent from.
Absolutely.
Correct?
Yes.
So I think it's terrific. I would like to hear a little bit tonight about what some of the neighbor objections have been, if any, so.
Well, naturally, anytime, you know, you do a project like this, you'll have some objections. I think some of the concern early on was, I think, the lack of care that they've seen in the Diller property. I think some of the neighbors stressed that there was quite a bit of garbage and were concerned perhaps that opening this up to public could then produce some more debris. But I think those concerns were addressed during both the EPC and the P&amp;Z meetings. That was definitely one of them. You know, there are some neighbors that are concerned that the property, the line within, not the Diller property per se, but the Board of Education, is close to their setbacks. And, you know, it is care, custody, and control by the Board of Education, and they have the right to be able to do what they would like to do within their, their footprint. So Dr. Landon is meeting with some of the neighbors because he'd like to hear what they have to talk about, and similar to how we've done other projects at the Board of Ed, he does want to hear and see if there's a resolution that can be discussed. In terms of the Diller property, I think their biggest fear was that this might do something to the water imbalance and the issues that they have there with the flooding, but I think the experts that they had with Tai and Bond had, plus their scientists, lead scientists, were able to dispel those notions that that would affect that. I think that they, what they will learn is that once we do some remediation of the area and they pull out those invasive species, the flora and fauna that are there will really thrive because it's got quite a bit of invasive things going and taking over. So I think it'll probably, it will help with the water, you know, once they get those invasives out and put some non-invasives in. So those were really the concerns.
I would say that, and just generally, especially the folks along Nutmeg Lane, just increased activity. You know, they are living next to the high school. It is very active. We all know it's gotten more active, so of course, the concern that here is yet one more activity. There was some concern that the parking spaces that were provided would be used by the high school juniors when they're running late. We've all had high school juniors, but we will be relying on, the police department will be posting signs, probably limiting the parking to one or two hours, and we will have to rely on the police force to monitor that, just as they do along, say, Holly Lane. On the public side of Holly Lane, there's no parking during school hour signs. So it was things of that nature, just the general activity, the use of the parking.
Great. Any other board questions? Well, I know that we all can watch the Planning and Zoning meeting and the EPC meeting to get added detail on Vimeo, but I want to thank you very much for coming to give us an update tonight. We really appreciate it very much, and we'll follow the process closely as it goes from here. And I don't, I don't think I'm hearing any objections, although we're not scheduled to take a vote tonight. My sense is that we're, the board is supportive of this project and grateful to the Darien Athletic Foundation for your gift.
So just so I am clear to report back to you, the next step would be that the Selectmen will take a vote to refer it to the RTM. Is that the process?
You know, I'm going to have to check with Kate on that because we are not scheduled to take a vote this evening, so.
No, I mean, but just whether it's this evening, that's the next step?
I think that it should get approvals from all of the town boards, I believe, because it involves accepting a gift from the Darien Athletic Foundation. So we'll detail exactly what happens and what stages for you.
Okay, that'd be helpful. Still learning these processes.
I was just going to ask, because I'm going to rules now, and I didn't know if we wanted to put it on the agenda for June to try and make that deadline.
I think, I think we want it on, on the agenda. We have another meeting, so we can take it up on June 3rd.
But we're setting the agenda, June, tonight, so just throwing that up there.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend putting it on your agenda for June 10th, I believe.
Do you have to have voted on it for us to put it on the agenda?
No.
I think it just needs to be a recommendation. I spoke with Tara Ackman as well, head of the Board of Education, and while she couldn't be here, she did say that it probably wouldn't be appropriate for her to comment until it comes back around through all the necessary, you know, town bodies.
Yep. So I think what I'll do, just so that we can be as supportive as possible, in light of the fact that we're not taking a vote tonight, why don't we take a sense of the meeting of the board that you can carry forward into your process? Would that be helpful to you?
That would be helpful.
Okay. So I will, I will support, a sense of the meeting, support this project and the gift to the town, so.
I'm moving.
Great, thank you.
A second.
Second, great. Any further discussion, all those in favor of a sense of the meeting agreement? Great.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for coming.
You're welcome.
Okay. Now, I just want to make a note here.
I have no idea. Is the size of the gift made available yet, Jamie?
No, it hasn't been made available yet.
Okay.
Well, it's available, but I don't have it with me this evening, so.
It wasn't.
She's still here.
Can you come?
What's that?
Can you come back up, Jen, sorry, and share with us what you know about the financials?
The gift of the running path will cost between $200,000 and $300,000, and it's privately funded by Darien Athletic Foundation founders.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have your other hat on now for the moment. Yeah. It's handy that we did that.
Okay, so moving on to new business, discuss and take action to approve the changes to the bylaws of the Darien Boat Club, and we have Commodore Tom Lockdefeld here with us this evening.
Hi, Tom Lockdefeld.
Hello, Tom.
Thanks for having me. Jamie, you also requested just an update.
Yes, thank you.
Just 11 bullet points.
Thank you.
I know we had a call back in February, and I paid my dollar rent, but I didn't realize I had to give something in writing, so there we go. So tonight I'm here, we're respectfully requesting the approval of our amended bylaws and rules and regulations, which is required under the lease to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. We haven't had an update in about, since 2009, and we just found that what was in practice at the Boat Club for the rules and regulations wasn't maybe exactly what, what was in the, in the rules and regulations themselves. And for the bylaws, we just really updated them to modernize them a bit. A lot of our communication is done by email now, so we did just, you know, basically modernized it. I have a list that I've provided. I could go through every one of them, or I could answer questions that you might have.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's necessary.
Okay.
You know, some.
I have a comment.
Yes.
I attended the Boat Club meeting when there were present as the members.
Oh, thanks, okay.
There was some, some little discussion and clarification, but not a lot, and it was enthusiastically and unanimously accepted, as I remember.
Yeah, your memory is good.
So it's interesting that, as the Board of Selectmen, that we're in the business of reviewing and approving changes to your house and ground rules and bylaws, but because that's what's in the lease, that's what we're doing.
Right.
So I kind of looked at this with my lens of what are the impacts to the general public? You know, we're looking out for the taxpayers and anybody who might be able to enjoy the Boat Club, and if there are any negative impacts. So in terms of the bylaw changes, I did read through your current bylaws, and I, I don't have any particular negative comments on your bylaw changes, no comments at all, other than a question to know if you undertake a legal review of your bylaws and the changes there, too.
We didn't undertake a legal review of the bylaws, but I'd just like to bring your attention to two items that we called for a formal change in the bylaws on, and one of those is number five here, Section 3.7. We have offered to transfer membership to a spouse upon the death of a member. We've always felt, you know, that, you know, just because the member dies, we're not going to, like, kick his family out of the club. So that's been in practice, but it's never been formalized, so we formalized that. And then this second one is number six, and this introduces a one-time, and that's during the life of the membership bond, ability of transfer of membership between spouses. And we found that this was necessary. We found that over the course of the last, you know, 17 years that I've been on the board, we've had quite a few cases where there've been, you know, couples get a divorce, and the man is the member, and he needs to move to, you know, Norwalk or something, and then all of a sudden, they're out of the club, and the family gets punished, and that's just, that's just not right. So we will allow them to transfer that membership, either a man to woman or a woman to man, and hopefully solve that problem. Now, that being said, for that particular document, we employed a law firm to construct that document for us, and we have that document on file.
So the only reason why I bring that up is I don't know if, if you should have a legal review to make sure that there isn't some boilerplate language to include about anti-discrimination or anything of the sort. So I'm not, I'm not opining on that this evening, I'm just bringing it to your attention for the possibility of considering a legal review.
Okay.
Okay.
10 years from now, or what?
I'll follow up with our town council, and we can determine whether he believes that it's a necessary component based on the fact that we, a public entity leases you the land.
Okay.
So we'll work with you on that.
All right, so I'll look to hear from you then.
Okay. Questions on?
I have a quick question, just overall, just to educate myself a little bit. Someone that lives, is everyone that lives in Darien entitled to become a member of the Boat Club?
They need to be voted on. I think there's only one time where we rejected a candidate, and that was because he had illegally stolen service from, services from us for about three years and dodged us when we started asking questions and things like that. I mean, we have the right to say no and not elect somebody to membership, but that's the only one occasion in the last time that I've been on the board, at least.
Okay. And then the
And then the other, it's just a curi, as I was reading through all of the different things, just curious about, why is it that you guys only allow club members to purchase gas?
I believe that's in the lease, if I'm not mistaken.
I believe it is.
Oh, okay, so that's just following along with that.
Right.
Yes.
We actually started enforcing that really a lot more scrupulously last year, and that was just due to the fact that we put in these new gas tanks, and they were funded by the, by the members, and, yeah, I mean, I really honestly don't think the members of the, of the basin in there want to see boats coming in left and right by guests who aren't residents of Darien, but that is in the lease agreement, that it's restricted.
Okay. Those were my only questions. I guess also going back to the membership, because it is town property, I think it might be a good idea to tighten that up a little bit, because technically, I always viewed it as if you lived in town, you could certainly join the Boat Club, certainly not, you'd have to get on a waiting list for a slip or for a mooring, but as a member, so obviously there was a very good reason why that person didn't get admitted to the club, but that would be my only suggestion to try and see if there's any way to tighten that up, to have specific reasons why someone wouldn't be able to get into the club, because it is town property. It's not like a private club where you can certainly have other rules and regulations, but since it's town property, I guess I'm surprised that that hasn't come up in the past. Something to think about.
I think the bylaws, if I'm not mistaken, call for a vote on all memberships, so if anybody can be a member, that there shouldn't be a, you know, I wouldn't think there'd have to be a vote for memberships, but we vote on all the members in every single monthly board meeting.
Okay.
We discuss candidates, we give the address, we allow for comment if need be.
And do you have a limit as to how many members you could have?
No.
Okay, good, that's great.
As long as you're.
That's huge.
Yeah, right.
The memberships are family memberships?
Yes, and if, minute kids turn 25, they're supposed to get their own membership. I just went through some paperwork about two months ago, some slip paperwork, and I found a 31-year-old member with a registered boat in a slip with, co-registered with his dad, and I said, you know, you really just need to join the club, so he did.
How many members do you have right now?
Six hundred and eighty-five member families, I believe, like, right around that ballpark figure.
And do you have a long waitlist?
For?
I guess.
Facilities?
For general memberships and then for slips.
Right, there's no waitlist for general memberships. That's, you want to come, we're happy to have you, as long as you behave yourself. Nah, you can, I tell people when they say, well, I hear there's a 20-year waitlist for a slip, and I say, well, you know, the membership dues are cheap enough that if you come to the three barbecues with your family, you could probably break even, so, because they're free. We have a lot of those.
So what's the slip waitlist, then?
Slip waitlist anywhere from five to as high as 15 or 16 years.
Years, but how many people are on your?
Two hundred and fifty slips and about, no, we have 238 slips and about 260 people on the waitlist.
Well, there are certain sized slips, several different sizes.
We got in pretty quickly because we got a smaller boat.
All right, and we try and encourage that, to get people going, and we also implemented.
If you're 16 feet and under, there seems to be a little bit more.
Right, we implemented a launch service about 10 years ago to help people who were on that waitlist, who wanted to boat, to help facilitate their, their enjoyment of boating. They got a mooring in the harbor and couldn't afford to join the yacht club and get a launch service there, we, and that's been a very successful program. We have about 50 people per year who make use of the launch.
Okay, great. Okay, any other board questions?
Yeah, is there any reason that your lease requires the Board of Selectmen to approve the ground rules?
That was my, my opening comment. I don't know why that was put into the lease in 1987, I think it was.
I had a brief conversation with Wayne Fox today and asked him that question, and he wasn't giving this as a 100% legal opinion. His thoughts were that that way the Boat Club wouldn't do things outside of the lease. If we, if we still had to have some look at the bylaws, that whatever was decided in the lease would have to be followed. If there was something crazy outside of it, we would be aware of it.
So I think your, your question was specific to the house and ground rules, which is.
I mean, I understand the bylaws, but having, you know, control, I don't understand having control over the ground rules seems to be overreach.
Right, I'm sure the Boat Club would love to get those back, if you want to give it to us back, but then the lease would have to be amended, and that's a big deal as well.
So I don't know if there's any time pressure on us voting to approve this, Tom?
No, I don't think so.
So not to belabor the point, I think I'd like to request that we table the vote for tonight so I can answer the legal question for you, whether we should have or you should have a legal review of the bylaws.
Okay.
Hopefully, it'll be an easy answer, and then we'll just put it back on our agenda for our next meeting.
Okay, and if you need anything from me, just tell you know where to find me.
Perfect, okay. We appreciate you coming tonight, giving us your update and answering our questions.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. I think I probably need to amend.
Or, Kate, can you, do we vote to table it?
Let's vote, let's take a vote to table item 6A until our next meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Susan moves.
I'll second.
Pam seconds, okay, second. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Great, thank you. Can we, our sense of the meeting, who moved and seconded that? Sorry, I'm shirking on my.
I believe I moved.
I think I seconded.
Thank you.
I'll find out who's seconded.
Great. Okeydoke, appointments. We have three appointments this evening, two appointments and one reappointment. Appointment of Parker Rand Ricardi to the Youth Commission for a term expiring on 3/31/22, appointment of Emmanuel James Minnick to the Housing Authority for a term expiring on 6/30/23, and the reappointment of Jim Metzger to the Commission on Aging for a term expiring on 3/31/22. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Mark, all those in favor? Great, okay. We have meeting minutes, regular and special meeting minutes of May 6th. Any additions or corrections?
Corrections to the May 6th, as noted.
All right. Any other corrections or additions to the, either the special or regular meeting minutes of May 6th? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
Okay, may I have a second?
A second.
Susan, all those in favor? Great, thank you. All right, agenda review. Okay, hearing nothing, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Pam, may I have a second?
Second.
Mark, all those in favor? Great.